All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, April 26th Board of Selectmen's meeting. We're going to start with citizens input. I don't think we have anyone here anything in the box. Nope.
Flag, flag.
Okay, all right, flags. Doc's always reminding you of the flag. I was just jumping right to it. So we're going to stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice pro. All right, great. So up first, we have a change of manager application for Foxborough Country Club. So Julie and Lou, if you don't mind just coming up to the hot seat.
Yep.
Tell us a little bit about, I know you've been here before over this, but we understand, I, at least I understand the challenges, you know, with staffing and everything.
Yeah, yeah, so we definitely had, I mean, we'll run through just the history. I know, so we didn't have a club business manager for, during COVID, so we did not have that. We had it in the name of John Gray during that time period. And then we made a, we, we had it in the name of sort of a club in John Gray when John, once we hired the club business manager last summer, Ty, we put it in his name. And then circumstances beyond our control, there was a number of items, but it was, he found a place closer to home and something that fit his. He actually, we, he coaches baseball, which was one of the conflicts that he had. He didn't think he could, could coach baseball, which was his love, and also work at the club during this, during our hours, especially on Fridays, would be a conflict. So he resigned and moved to a position that allowed him to continue to coach baseball.
Do you not know he coached baseball when he took the job?
He, he knew he coached baseball. I think he thought he could make it work.
Yeah.
And I, I.
He lived a little further away, too, from what I remember, right?
He was about a good 50-minute ride through, through Providence. But, all right, so this is Julie. So this is, she's our club business manager. We just hired her back in March. She has a pedigree coming from a number of establishments in Boston. I don't know if you want to give a little bit of your history?
Yeah, I've been a general manager for over 10 years. Two main ones, Brandy Pete's Financial District, downtown Boston. I was there five years, left, went to The Bell in Hand, which is tourist by day, nightclub by night. It was pretty interesting. And then I went back to Brandy Pete's, where I stayed another five years. So collectively, it's been, you know, over 10 years of GM. You know, and I have all that, the TIP certified, I'm CPR certified, I am Crowd Manager certified, but I don't think they even require that anymore. But in the nightclub, you had to be Crowd Manager certified. So I've gone through all of that training.
So slightly different with our crowd, we're not really, like, we're not quite a nightclub, thankfully.
Yes, thankfully.
But she does live right in Walpole, which is nearby, which is helpful. So that was one of our, that was definitely one of our ideal criteria, was to have somebody that we felt would be, you know, logistically able to get back and forth with the club and not have that be a burden. So, as well as experience, obviously, GM experience is, was also high on our list, so.
And I know for me, there's been some talk about, does it go in a member's name? And, you know, they are just a member, they're not there all the time. So I like the idea personally. I know it can be a challenge at times, you know, but to have it in the name of a professional staff that is there and, you know, does this kind of for a living and has the experience, that's just my, my two cents on it.
Yeah.
Any, any questions?
No, yes, it's mine.
Motion to approve a change of manager for Foxborough Country Club from Ty Cosgrove to Julie McGonigal.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
All right.
All right, thanks, guys. Thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good season, too.
All right, good to see you. All right.
Good if it gets you.
Yeah, it's right now.
Come in, it's good.
It's Tyler wearing jackets.
Good night, thank you.
Have a good night.
All right, so up next, we have the Commons. Do we know if anyone's coming from the Commons?
I doubt they are.
Probably not, they did it last year. But this one does have to come before us. So Bill has approved some outdoor dining already for Union Straw and Skip Jacks. Those are on private property, so he can just approve those, whereas the Commons eatery does want to make use of the public way, which is why, the difference of why this particular one comes, comes to us. So we do have an application in front of us from the Commons. The Butters did get notice. I think that there were, Paige, I'll let you speak to some of the, the concerns that they wanted to just make sure were covered, that we discussed before we look at this and approve it.
Yes, so I'm Paige Duncan, Planning Director. As you know, for the past two summers, we have been able to accommodate the Commons' requests. Based on the advice of the new Health Director, last year, we switched to more seating on the alley than in the front. In the first year, it was a little tight with handicap accessibility, but more importantly, from Matt Brennan's point of view, you need a certain amount of clearance from the doorways. So that's how we ended up with more tables in the alley. The one request from Foxborough Cable Access, or Margaret at Foxborough Cable Access, was to suggest that the tables be pushed to the wall of the Commons. I think at some points last year, they might have been more in the middle, and she was pointing out that it made traversing that alley difficult. So I don't think that's a problem, we could just add that as a condition. So for right now, we're showing up to four. I'm not sure, I don't know if anybody can see this, but I'm not sure that they would end up with four. We just kind of put the two in the front. Last year, I don't recall that they even had two going.
I think there was four, wasn't there four?
The first year.
First year.
First year, and then they roped it off.
Okay.
Yeah, so I don't know what, this gives them some flexibility. Obviously, we continue to work with them. The handicap accessibility is key, and now we want to, you know, make sure that there's clearance in the alley. But other than that, we've had it be well received. As you know, they don't serve alcohol, so it's really more of a morning lunch crowd. And I know folks have really enjoyed sort of watching the town go by on weekend mornings when they could sit out there, so.
And since we just toured the local alleys recently, it is one of the more passable alleys, so it is good that the tables are kind of pushed up. I like, I like the idea of pushing them all the way to the building, just to allow it for accessibility.
And someday, we hope to improve that alley, like, improve the treatment, the floor, the pavement and whatnot, but for right now, it's passable and we'll make do, but it would be nice eventually to have that be more of amenity for all of us.
All right, so I don't have any questions. Anyone else have any questions on this one? All right, so we'll take a motion, then we'll come back to Paige.
Motion to approve a temporary outdoor dining permit for the Commons Neighborhood Eatery.
Any further discussion?
I'll second it with a thought of, do we have to add pushing the tables?
Yes.
As part of the motion, or just?
It's in the, it's in the application, right?
Well, you could just add that as a condition in your motion. I'd just do that.
With the condition that?
Motion to approve, approve a temporary outdoor dining permit for the Commons Neighborhood Eatery with the condition that the tables are moved up against the facility, Commons building.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? All right, and then I asked Paige while we had her here, obviously, last year, we made outdoor dining permanent instead of temporary. So when we talked this year, we said, you know, do we want everyone to have to go through the permanent process, or since, since the laws right now are still allowing for temporary outdoor dining, we thought it made sense, and it was the easiest for the businesses that are still kind of recouping to go through this easier process. But just a reminder to, to everyone and all the businesses that, you know, if this were to end for next year, we do allow permanent outdoor dining now. So I just wanted Paige to come in and give a, give a quick little rundown on what a business would need to do, thinking ahead, thinking early for the future.
Sure. So we did approve at last November's town meeting, an amendment, we created a new 7.6 of the zoning bylaw, and that allows outdoor premises by restaurants. So basically, it's a site plan review process for the planning board. So it is a formal process, you know, there is an application fee and some plans have to be done. Of course, that might be something we want to take a look at, at the planning board level of maybe we don't, you know, the plans that we see for temporary outdoor dining are really just sketches, whereas site plan requirements tend to be, you know, engineered, stamped. So that's something we might have to take a look at for standards, because I don't know that we're going to require that level. But again, if you are adding a permanent fence or some sort of permanent improvement, it would need to be surveyed and done correctly. So that's something to be worked out, but I would suggest that, you know, a couple months prior to, at a minimum, you know, schedules get busy, that, you know, around the turn of the, the new calendar year, businesses might want to start thinking about talking to me and coming up with a site plan and an application to do it. And basically, the planning board will review it. We, it's similar to what we do now, it'd be looked at by the Board of Health, the Building Commissioner, Police and Fire. You know, the plans have to show what we see now, which is basically the location of the dining area, the restaurant, some setbacks, points of egress, handicap accessibility, landscape ring planting, traffic, et cetera. So that's basically the process it will be. It will be more stringent than it is now. Right now, it is very informal, you know, I mean, we allow sketches and it really, it's, and the really, the key thing I should caution here, and Katie would know better than me on this one, but the ABCC is the, is the holdup here. So it's not going to be the planning board. If you, if a business or a restaurant wants to serve alcohol, I believe it's like a six-month lead time, I don't know if, if folks here know, but I believe it's a six-month lead time, because ABCC has to come out and do a site visit, so.
Not to throw you on the spot, Katie, but is that consistent to what we're, we're hearing?
No, you're right. And then once it goes in front of the board, it's like another six to eight weeks before they would even approve it. Like, once we get the, once-
Maybe we should put together some sort of-
The board approves it here, then it would go back to the ABCC, so.
Okay. Maybe we should put, you know how we just have put together the guide for like the new restaurants?
Well, we haven't quite put that together yet.
I know that's on your, that's on your radar.
Turns out, it's a lot more difficult thing, you would think. No wonder people are having trouble with it.
Right. But once, you know, maybe once things calm down, if you have a minute to breathe, it might be good just to lay something out, just to make sure that everyone's on the same page.
No, that's a good point. And now, and I correct myself, because I said, you know, maybe around the turn of the calendar year, but if they wait till January 1, and in talking about six-plus month process, they'd be in the middle of summer.
And the state could rescind this on short notice, so.
They really need to be ready.
Something to really think about.
Yeah, I think the deadline for them to renew this is, is next March, April?
Yeah.
But if they don't renew it, it's going to come really fast for these businesses.
My sense is they're not, probably not going to do it this time.
And the sad thing is, we won't know, because this year, I mean, if you recall, it was down to the wire. So I mean, it was like, I think expiring April 1, and they did it late, late March. So the problem is, the businesses are just not going to know until March or April next year, probably, unless they come out and say, we're not doing it.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so I will make a note that in the fall, maybe we just outreach and say, listen, we're not expecting this to happen, just a reminder, and, and just sort of, I can work with Katie on the ABCC stuff, because that really is going to be the, the stranglehold. But, you know, obviously, planning can get difficult if we got, you know, we've had 17 outdoor dining establishments, so if they all wanted to do this, you know, the same timeframe, we would be busier and a little harder to come. I doubt we would see that many, but you don't know.
Yeah, but it's worked, it's been successful, so.
Yeah.
You're right, you're really talking September, October.
Yeah.
Starting to look into it if they want to.
I'd say even really the net, maybe even earlier, yeah.
Yeah, like, right when we get through summer, it's almost like you go right into, I know you don't want to think about it, but, you know, if you want a liquor, if you have a liquor license, then.
For them, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, so we just wanted to kind of be proactive and get a PSA out there, just reminding everyone that it's permanent and, you know, the future thoughts.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paige.
Question, Paige? Sorry. You mentioned fences and permanent structures. Does that imply that a, a place, a business could build a permanent private structure on public land, or?
No.
Everything on public land is temporary stuff, right?
Yes.
Okay.
When you go to Conrad's, theirs is like approved and, and permanent. So restaurants making something permanent, like, I'm just using example, like, let's say the 99 on private land wanted to do something.
Yeah, I'm just saying, like, on the sidewalk, it's movable tables and chairs, and that's it. Or flower baskets that you can pick up and, okay.
Anything, I mean, anything that would have to go on public land would have to come through this. We don't contemplate it really too much here, but anything that, you know, if, say, the Commons wanted to do something more permanent, they'd start here. So it would be with you guys, but we, that's not really what this is about.
Okay.
So, yeah, we don't anticipate planters and whatnot in the alley, unless they want to do it, you know, to pretty it up, just to get it attractive, but, yeah.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paige.
All right, great. You guys are up next, so we're going to introduce the new library director, Libby O'Neill, and give a brief update on the Boydin Library. Welcome. You guys could just introduce yourselves to everyone at home and.
Sure. Good evening, I'm Colin Ernst, our Service Chair of the Board of Trustees, the Boydin Library.
I'm Libby O'Neill, the new library director of the Boydin Library.
Welcome.
Delighted to be here to introduce Libby to the community and to the Select Board. Libby joined us in late March after a rigorous search process that might help us lead. And as you may know, the prior director, Manny Leet, left in January to pursue some new life opportunities in Tennessee, and he's doing great. And we were really fortunate to, to have Libby come and be our new director. She was the unanimous choice of our screening committee and the unanimous choice of our Board of Trustees, and I'm going to let her do the rest of the intro. We're so glad to have her, and she's the star of the show, so.
Okay, yes, I've been the director for a couple weeks now. I'm just starting, starting to get my feel for the library, the community. I've met with a lot of the department heads. I've sent out questionnaires to my staff, asking, you know, how the library excels, some improvements. We've talked about professional development and how I can help them as a manager, and then I've met with them all on one-on-one, and we've continued those conversations. And I'm just trying to learn all I can, and, you know, then my biggest thing that I like to focus on, along with connecting with the community, is programs and outreach. So once I can sort of get my footing, I'm trying to jot down all the ideas that I can start implementing.
Great. And I see you have some meet and greets coming up, right? Did I see?
I do, yes.
A couple of those coming up for Citizens?
Yes, a couple in May, and it's just a drop-in, get to know you, and, you know, I'm welcoming any feedback, suggestions for the library, and I'm also then, also on the calendar, starting a book club. And I'm also partnering with Mark Craig at the Council on Aging and assisting to lead their book club, so starting to get some things going.
Wonderful. Any questions?
Do you like red or white at the book club, or just bring your own, or does that work?
They have picked a selection, so I'm trying to quickly read that.
Yeah.
Right, right, right.
Okay.
And.
No podcasts allowed, right?
No.
Happens at the book club, stays at the book club.
No broadcast of that. But, yeah, we'll, we'll see. And then, you know, once I do establish a book club at the library, which I've gotten a lot of feedback from the staff, is what patrons have been asking for, so that's like my first order of business for programming. I will be asking everyone at the book club that joins what they would like to read, and then we'll go forward with that.
I love to see you collaborating with all the departments already, so that's wonderful.
Yeah.
That's, that's part of why, you know, she was recommended by the screening committee and, and had a big, you know, a large part of why the trustees voted unanimously to bring her in. And, you know, if I could say a few more words, it was, it was a pleasure working with the Board of Trustees, and, and we had, you know, actually a great selection of, of folks who came in, who we screened and then interviewed, some really terrific folks. And Libby just rose head and shoulders above the rest with, with her experience, with her, her energy, her motivation, her, her, you know, these programs, and I want to do this, and I want to, I mean, she is so much energy, we are excited. And I'll say, we just finished negotiations with the, with the library union, and, and we got a thumbs up unanimously from across the tables, and we love our new director, Libby is great. So, so from all around, you know, you know, great kudos.
Sounds like we're lucky to have you.
Thanks so much.
So welcome aboard.
I'm sure, I know that the, the town administrator from Norfolk kicked me under the table last night, I saw her, because you went there, so. But, but actually, Libby has a connection to our building commissioner, too, where she worked in Marion at one point, at Tabor Academy, right, where, where Scott came from, was and worked in Marion for a number of years, and they crossed paths a few times over there, so, so she already has some, some connection to the, to the, to the staff over here as well. But we're really excited about the, about the energy you bring, and as well as the connections you're already making and establishing. I'm, I'm really grateful for all the, the help that the department heads have made and made themselves available to you. And, and again, want to thank Colin and the trustees for a great process and yielding a very good result, so thank you.
Appreciate the support, and, you know, what we as a Board of Trustees strive to do is make the library a, a resource and a center for the community, so all feel welcome, and there's resources and programming and space for them. And that was central to our screening process and the questions that the team asked. And again, Libby embodied all of those priorities for us so well, in her experience and her mindset, how she's approaching things community-centric and staff-centric, and programming to serve those constituencies. So we're, we're just so thrilled and look forward to great things.
Wonderful. All right, thanks so much.
Thank you so much.
Have a good one.
You, too, have a good night.
Have a great night.
All right, so we're going to move into Assistant Town Manager, Town Manager, and then Selectmen's update. We have, have a number of items, good discussion within here, so I'll let you start, Mike, and then, you know, when Mike's through, Bill, you can head right into your update.
Okay.
Got to keep the love fest going, Mike.
There we go.
Positivity there, so let's, let's keep it up.
I thought I had attached, and I apologize, because I don't see it now, the, the recruitment report?
I see it now.
Okay.
I see it here.
Because I don't, so I'm looking at the, but I have my paper copy, so I'll read from that. So we've been very busy in the, you know, posting, interviewing, and hiring department, mostly with, with summer recreational positions, to be honest. We've hired a head counselor, three recreation counselors, three junior recreation counselors, four lifeguards, and in addition to that, two library pages. And, and we, and we have a bunch of, you know, recruitments in process that have been going on for a while. I will say that this is a, this is a challenging time to recruit and hire staff, it really is, and we're not seeing it get easier. We have had a couple of our pages move on, and pages don't generally stay for a long time. They have high school students in general, they don't have to be, but, but we've had a couple of terrific pages, you know, you know, move on to other things, and so we've hired two new ones, and we're, we're still looking for more. One thing that you will see, you know, hopefully by the beginning of the summer, is that we're going to take a look at the, the wages for our library pages, as well as our seasonal summer laborer position over at DPW. We were able to address our recreational positions because we needed to really get a, a, you know, a step up on recruiting those early. But we're actually working on comps right now for the pages and library and, and laborer position, you know, the seasonal one. And, you know, we want to make sure we're comparable. As a, as a municipality, we are exempt from, you know, from paying, you know, state minimum wage, and, and we normally have been below minimum wage, which has not hurt us, but we're at a point where we need to, you know, raise the bar a little bit, and so we're in the process of doing that. So the, yeah, so the, so the DPW director and the library director are working with me on getting comparables on those, and I'll bring that to the Personnel Board, and we'll get that up to where it should be so we can continue to hire great people.
That's important, so, wonderful. Been busy with summer stuff.
Great. You good? Okay, excellent. So just a few things for you. I did copy the board on a letter that I sent to Congressman Arkin Claus today, requesting some funding for a community project funding for Route 1 sewer design. So we're going to, we're looking at trying to get some money to look at the initial design and, and see how, where that planning process takes us. There's an initial investment to do this, well, a major investment would be, somebody that are, 25 to 30 million dollars to do this project, but you can't really do any of that until you have a good handle on what the design would be. And so Congressman Arkin Claus has mentioned to me, and his staff have mentioned to me that this is a, has a regional implication, so therefore it has some, some real appeal at his level to try and get funding for this. So this is just the very initial stage of looking and planning for an improvement that has been badly needed for so, so many years. So this would actually provide impact to, from communities from Plainville all the way up to Walpole along Route 1, of course, impacting Foxborough in a significant way as well. So we certainly hope that it will be successful. There's about a $400,000 request in for that design phase. Want to thank Chris Gallagher and Lance Del Piero for helping to pull that information together at really short notice to get that request before Congress. So hopefully, we'll keep our fingers crossed and see what happens with that. I had one property permit for the, and that was for the Rotary Peace Day program, scheduled for September 17th, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., and that will be on the common, to be, to be used for, to support.
Is that the 25th or the 17th? The, the application says the 25th.
I have the 17th, but the, no, expires on the 25th.
Oh, expires, sorry.
On the 25th, yeah. And there's a rain date of the 24th, in case that, in case that's needed. So that will be to, to help celebrate the Peace, the Union, the United Nations Peace Day in Foxborough. And then, as far as outdoor dining approvals, we've approved Union Straw and Skip Jacks already for outdoor dining capabilities, consistent with the conversation we had earlier tonight. So that is, that's where we're at. We did have a meeting this afternoon to prepare for town meeting and, and some, had, and had an action commodity. Do you want me to get into that, or?
Yeah, I mean, if you want to get into it, I can, you can kind of lay the groundwork, and then I'll tell you guys what I think we should do.
So we, so we had, we went through all 22 articles for town meeting, and, and had Town Counsel here, Frank Spillane, Bob Cutler, we had George, myself, Leah, and, and Mike, of course. We, we all went through the warrants, just to make sure we're ready for the town meeting, and, which is actually a week from this coming Monday. And we, by and large, were fine with everything that's on there, but there were a few questions about, you know, the, the quantum of vote that's needed for some articles, and, and then we got to an article, I think it was Article 19.
19, you have the Select Board one.
Which, which was the article for us to change the name from Selectment to Select Board. And this is an interesting article, because it's, it covers both bylaw as well as zoning bylaw, and as such, would require a two-thirds majority vote, because it covers, it's, it's affected in the bylaw, in the zoning bylaw, which, by the way, also requires a public hearing, which we all looked at each other, did anybody do the public hearing? And, and the answer was, no, we did not. So, so there was two ways to address it. One, we could, we could just simply pass the, the bylaw portion, which wouldn't require the public hearing, but the zoning bylaw, and the zoning bylaw piece could wait till the fall. But instead, the, it was the opinion of everybody sitting around the table that we'd probably just wait and do it all at once in the fall, and just hold a public hearing and get it done all at once. So it's not an emergency measure, so therefore, it's something that we can just do.
Yeah, so I thought, we'll take no action. To me, it seemed cleaner to wait on it till the fall.
Right.
Than piecemeal it and, you know, fix half of them and then have to go, it's just, it's extra work for everyone.
Right.
So I think we all want to get this done, but when we looked at the calendar, they need two weeks for the public hearing notice, and we're one day shy of that. So this would take this, would take no action on this at town meeting, and then Planning Board would hold the public hearing, you know, for the fall, and everything's ready to go for the fall for this one.
This is one where, where everybody around the table looked at each other, says, nobody picked up on that. It was just like.
Why would it be a zoning issue?
Because it's in the zoning bylaws.
It's located-
Oh, or the selectmen is in zoning, so that would-
Exactly.
Right.
So even though it's a very, very minor change, it does still require that process to be completed. And it's interesting to point out that Pat Costello even noted, he said it's actually happened in a couple of the communities, where they did do it, they split it up, but he himself agreed that it's probably just cleaner to do it in one fell swoop, so.
So that's my recommendation, but I didn't want to make a decision without talking to you guys, so I said, hey, we're meeting tonight, we'll talk about it, see if everyone's under agreement of that way to handle it, push it to the fall.
Much better to push it to the fall than split it up.
Then split it, you were good with that? Okay. All right, so we'll, we can't take it off the warrant since the warrant's closed, but we'll just take no action on that at town meeting.
And so, and as far as the two articles, there'll probably draw, there'll be other articles too, but I think the ones that are being sponsored by the board for marijuana and for billboard, there'll be a brief presentation about that, about marijuana, and then I've given Leah some talking points with respect to, which have been checked by Bronny, if you saw that, with respect to the billboard issue, so I think we're in pretty good shape with that.
However, if either of you want to present either of those, let me know.
Happy to.
I didn't want to make an assumption that you want to give me, but-
No, no, I mean, if you want to take some of the stress off of you, I'll do one of them.
You want to do the billboard one?
Sure.
Okay, all right. I mean, I've done the marijuana presentation now so many times, that I'm more than happy to hand the baton off, but I feel like I've done that one.
I'll forward you the talking points for that.
I appreciate that, Josh.
Yeah, take some of the stress off of you.
And, you know, it is going to be a long town meeting, it is towards the end, we've done a number of these presentations, public hearing on the marijuana, so my thought was it will be kind of a more abbreviated presentation, I think there's four key slides that I think are good to set the stage. Adcom's write-up is extremely thorough, Jay did a great job with the write-up on that, so I don't want to, you know, replicate what they're saying as well, I want to keep it as concise as possible. And then, you know, we did talk about just printing out a couple of those slides, just so people can have them. There is also a QR code, or you can go to the town's website, there will be an ad in the report on this Thursday, reminding everyone where everything is, so, you know, there's ample opportunity, I think, for everyone to go see the full dog and pony show, and then once we get to town meeting, I think we'll be able to just condense it just a little bit on that one. And then if anything else comes up on any of the other ones, you know, obviously, I think we'll figure out who's best to speak, or, you know, it can be me, or whatever, so.
So just backtrack to the select board, will Adcom get up and say?
So they're actually, Paul, the chair of the Adcom, is watching this meeting right now, to wait and see what your vote was, and then they're going to meet, because they've already voted to recommend approval, so now he'll get them to meet before the town meeting, probably just before, and vote no action as well, I would assume.
Yeah, I apologize for Paul not mentioning him, he was also present at the meeting today too.
Do we have to vote on that today?
If you're going to take no action, I would recommend you do that.
Okay.
Vote of no action on Article 19.
Article 19.
For the implications, just, so that's, instead of doing it at town meeting, we do it here?
Yeah, that we're recommending no action, because I think that one does need a recommendation going into it.
It would then be reported by Adcom at that meeting.
Okay. All right, so why don't we take a motion on that one, then, for no action on Article 19, select board?
Motion to vote no action on Article 19 for the name change of the Board of Selectmen.
And just under discussion, just pushing it to the fall, holding the public hearing that's required, so.
Second.
All right. Will those be favor? Okay.
Great.
All right, so Adcom recommendations are available now, I see Seth stole my copy right away, and Doug ran it out.
Oh, is that yours? Sorry, I thought you were passing me one.
And are those available online? Can people go to the town meeting? All right, so there is, on the homepage, there's a link for everything you could possibly need for town meeting, and those Adcom recommendations, I think, are hot off the press Friday and available there as well, as the warrant, the marijuana presentation that we talked about, a couple other things, so.
Oh, sorry, Leah, that presentation that you're giving, that's, is that like a new segment at town meeting? I don't recall the board ever getting up and doing presentations.
I recall quick presentations, just to set the stage, on other articles, like on zoning ones, I remember Kevin getting up and doing some, but since it is a board of sponsored, selected article, sponsored article, that's where it would fall, just under us to do a quick, a quick presentation. I think the others don't require it, because if you look at the door-to-door canvassing, and you look at the mari, if, once you read this, you'll see, I feel like the Adcom kind of covers it enough, but I think the marijuana is just a little, a little bit beefier, and quite honestly, I think it's one of those things that people are either for or against, fundamentally. So I think, I don't want to, at the end of town meeting, get into a long, drawn-out presentation, when we've given it so many times, but I do want to make sure that we cover it, you know, just in case someone hasn't tuned in yet, that they do have that, you know, quick baseline understanding.
Okay, got it, thanks.
So it's never, never actually been, no, I shouldn't say that, it's not usually done by the Board of Selectmen, more zoning and planning.
Yes.
But this is a unique case where, yeah, absolutely, we should discuss it a little bit.
And of course, I did ask Paige, do you want to do this? And she had said that her board preferred that we do it, so I respect that and understand that, so.
Oftentimes, it seems reactive, so someone will have a question, and we'll have planning board come up, or something, or something, but in this case, and I, probably in the past too, we've been proactive and said, can somebody, you know, can Paige come up and explain this? Okay.
Yep, and sometimes the big screen's down, it's going to be late at night, though, and to stop the meeting and get all the equipment ready, I think just printing out four black and white slides from back is just going to be quicker to move things along, so. So I talked about the warrant Article 19, the marijuana abbreviated presentation, Doc's going to take the billboard one, the Adcom recommendations are available, and then just continuing on that, their warrant review meeting is tomorrow at 2:00 p.m. in this meeting room, you can come here in person, it is an open, public meeting, it will be televised on cable access, and you can watch it by replay as well, so if anyone wants to, you know, just do a little bit more homework before town meeting, there are just a number of different ways you can get yourself ready and educated heading into it.
And Bill, did you go to the seniors too, or is this going to be the senior one?
The seniors as well, yeah, they're going to be at this meeting.
Yep.
So is that a new segment, something that's new?
Nope.
A meeting, a warrant review meeting for the public?
No, I usually do it on TV, prior to town meeting, or a special town meeting.
Cable access.
And then I also go and meet with the seniors, but this is actually timed out perfectly, so I could do both at the same time, so it's just a little bit different in that respect, but it's actually-
Saving him one presentation, but no different than we've done in the past, just combining up.
Yeah, sounds good, thank you.
Once that's on cable access, I'll be able to upload that to the town meeting page.
Perfect, and maybe we can even do a social post, just to, you know.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, so the next new business is just the town charter discussion. I wanted to tee this up, but I didn't want to get too far into it yet, we're going to have a new member, and Steph's not here, but, you know, Seth had a great idea about looking at the town charter, we haven't looked at it in a long time, and with a new town manager coming, I think it does make sense for us to really review that, and look at, you know, what works, what doesn't, what do we need to look at before the new town manager comes on board. We do have time to kick that off, you know, to start really talking about it in May, but just wanted to tee it up.
And not only that, a lot of people are confused, what's the difference between a town charter and the bylaws anyway? And I know we ran into, four, five years ago, some issues with the charter versus the bylaws, so I think it's a very good idea to clean it up.
Probably overdue.
It's actually, it's actually, in Foxborough, it's referred to as a special act.
Yeah.
So, and I know that some people feel differently about that, but really, is technically, technically, it's the same, it means the same, but I know some people-
Sorry, no, what means the same?
A special act versus the town charter.
Yeah.
Means the same, but what's interesting about the charter, charter actually speaks to almost everything, whereas this is sort of like a segmented piece of the charter, which is not really a, it's not a full comprehensive charter, if you will.
It's essentially our strong town manager act.
Right.
To really summarize it.
Exactly.
And, you know, maybe we'll look at it, and there isn't anything that needs to be